Okay, guys. Thank you to our audience of one for coming, Peter. We were in executive -- well, first we started our meeting at 6 o'clock tonight. We had a tutorial from our business manager, Ann Dineo, to just go through the financial documents. It's a good refresher or introduction to the ins and outs of the money. So, thank you to Ann. And we've decided we want to do it again because it was really helpful and we didn't get to everything. So, maybe we'll schedule that again for January, maybe before budget season. So, maybe the first business meeting in January, if that works for everybody. And then we went into an executive session to discuss a land sale, a real estate deal. And here we are. The only comments I want to make tonight is we -- which I'm sure anybody who is living in Phillips Town is aware, we lost a really important person in our town, Mr. Joe Giaginta. And I just think, just to take a moment to say that we're sorry to the family and we send condolences. And, you know, living in such a small town, it's like people like Mr. Giaginta, like they have a big impression on the community and they have a whole family where it seems like everyone's related to everybody or married to somebody who's related to somebody. And it becomes this web. And so, when we lose somebody important, it affects a lot of people and it certainly affects a lot of people at Haldane. So, we just send our condolences to the family and a big thank you to him for his contribution to our community. And we have a special guest with us tonight, Ms. Lindsay McIntyre. She's from the Monolith Solar organization that has done an amazing -- it's been a couple of years that we've been working with you guys, but it's come to fruition. And I'm going to turn it over to see if Dr. Bowers wants to make any comments before Ms. McIntyre shares her presentation with us.
Well, I have to say that the actual construction phase of working with your company was delightful. And it was without problem and we were -- you were responsive and helped us through the process and so we thank you. And now we'd like you to share with us the great job that you did and all the information that you'd like to leave us with, including, I think that, and Michael, you're going to be talking a little bit about the connection with the students and the website and -- Okay. So, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you so much for having me here tonight. We're really excited that this project is finally up and running. You know, it is a long process installing solar. You're dealing with utilities and NICE RDA, so a lot of hoops you have to jump through. The State Education Department and finally has come to fruition. So, thank you guys, you know, for all of your hard work putting out the, you know, the proposal and whatnot and selecting Monolith. So, we're really appreciative of that. To start off though, you know, the system is all installed. What we're looking at right here is the ballasted portion of the system. Total, it's 958 solar panels. So, just to give you an idea of what that's going to produce in electricity, that's enough energy to power about 400 residential homes in a year. So, this is a lot of electricity that we're generating here. And there are a lot of just opportunities to be involved with the students and showing them what, you know, what the power is doing, what days it's generating higher and lower. And I'll get into that in the presentation as well. So, just to give you guys a background, you know, you've been working with us for about two years now. We're involved in the commercial and residential end of the business and we're growing. So, both ends of the spectrum are growing as New York State has made solar more available, more affordable for homeowners and accessible for school districts. So, I'm really excited. Just to give you guys an overview of just how the system, it actually works, the panels themselves on the roof are generating a DC current of electricity. On the side of the school, you guys have devices known as inverters. Those are converting a direct current of electrons into this alternating current, which then gets fed out through a meter that goes out into the grid, especially in those summer months when you guys aren't here at the school. That meter spins backwards and it credits your accounts. In the winter months, you're going to be using all of the electricity that's generated, but summer months, those credits will accumulate. So, that's really neat. I mean, you'll see that on the side of the school. That's another opportunity for us. We do have an educator who works at Monolith who's open to coming down here and going over, you know, the inverter, the panels on the roof with the students, you know, the science and math teachers as well. So, that's something we would really like to set up. Her first name is Lee and she's done this a lot in the Capital District with our school. So, she's excited to come down here and help you guys out with that. Just to kind of go over how the program works, it's a power purchase agreement where you guys actually have a 25% discount on the electricity that's being generated. Here it just says 20%. That's typical for our schools. You guys have a deeper discount. So, basically, let's say you guys spend $100,000 on electricity over the course of the year. Well, 25% of that is discounted and you're saving $25,000 right off the bat. So, it's pretty exceptional that you're able to do that without putting any money forth in, you know, the tangible equity of the system. Monolith owns it and we're taking care of it, selling you what's being generated. So, these are just some of those external benefits of the system, which I'm sure you're all already aware of throughout this process. And here are just some pictures of the actual installation that we've taken with our drone. So, you can see, you know, ballasted system, not -- there's no penetrations on the roof right here. They're sitting on concrete ballasts, so really neat. Another opportunity, you know, down the road, if you guys ever wanted to take a class up there and show them the panels, this is something that we've done in the past and just show them how it works. So, here are just some flyover pictures for you guys to see. And then this is actually connected to the roof, so a little bit of a different installation there, just so you can see the wiring that goes into it. Those are those inverters that I had spoken about earlier. So, these are converting that DC current over to an AC current. Each inverter has a screen on it to show the production of the system. So, that's pretty neat to see if you're ever outside. Just part of the construction, wanted to show you guys what was going on there, running the conduit that's carrying that current. You've got our ballasts, our installers, they're happy to be here in the summer.
There were some really hot days.
Yeah.
I remember thinking about those installers.
And there's your system right on the roof, so really clean. There you go. There's another overhead shot there. So, this is just a total max power output for each of the three systems. You've got the high school where we're projecting to generate about 69,000 kilowatt hours annually. The elementary and middle school, which is the larger system, about 240,000 kilowatt hours annually. And then the bus garage coming in at about 38,000 kilowatt hours annually. So, a total of 349,030 kilowatt hours annually, which is really awesome because you guys can actually track the production. And we have online monitoring that shows us what each one of these systems is generating at each given point of time during the day. So, if we were to pull that up right now, it's dark out. Production is zero right now, but we can see what it's produced every day of the week, the month, every, you know, from the point of actual activation, what the system has generated, which is great for your students, just in the classroom, seeing what you guys have produced. So, just wanted to touch base really on our commitment to education and development of solar PV within the schools. With Monolith, we actually donate $250 to any referral that is brought to us through your district. So, that's a $250 donation to the STEM program. So, if you have any parents or teachers or anyone who lives within the district that goes solar, and this is something that we would, you know, partner with the school with and actually make a donation on your behalf. So, kind of neat that we do that. And so, yeah, anyone that comes through is going to get that. But just going into the curriculum development. So, the Department of Energy has actually developed a curriculum that we have access to on our website that shows different options within, you know, math and science for teachers to just, you know, employ within their classrooms. So, just the statistics offered through the monitoring, you know, researching the costs of electricity, the cost of solar, doing a cost-saving analysis, graphs showing the data. There's also a lot of environmental benefits of going solar, which I'll show you on the monitoring that are evident. And this is right on our website. It's our Knowledge is Power program. So, this is something that your teachers will have access to. We've got some blogs on there, solar schools, and then we've got an online discussion that's open for our teachers called the Chalkboard Talk. So, just really a place for ideas to come together where some of our teachers are just posting about what they're doing in the classroom. This is actually on the energy.gov, so the Department of Energy's website, where they have a lot of curriculums as well that go forward with solar. This is something that Lee, our educator, would come down and talk to you guys about, especially your teachers, just how to implement this within the classroom. So, a lot of different programs there. And we have a lot of tools that belong with Monolith that we can bring down and, you know, just lend to the classrooms to show them, just smaller solar panels that power light bulbs. We have a solar-powered go-kart. So, I know that's something we brought down about two years ago to the Eco Fair and definitely we would love to do that again. The next slide is just the monitoring. So, this is actually the high school's monitoring portal. And I took this at about, what time was it, 4:25. So, the sun was going down. You can see the instantaneous power here is pretty low just because the UV hitting the panels is very low. It gets dark at about 4:30. So, during the day, that's going to be a lot higher. What's really neat though is you can see what the system has generated to date. So, for the high school, that system has produced 9,184 kilowatt hours. It's a substantial amount of electricity. And then down at the bottom, this is pretty cool. This just shows your daily production. So, on a really sunny day, great sunny day, you want this chart to look similar to a bell curve. Lower in the morning, higher around 12 noon, and then drops off in the evening. Today was a little choppy, not perfect, but that's something that, you know, your classrooms could have access to, just to keep reviewing. So, that was the daily production. You can see there are different tabs here for the week, the month, the year, and the life. What's really neat about the system though is the environmental benefits of the system since installation. So, this is just the high school system, which is on the smaller side. So, you've saved 6.18 trees. Doesn't seem like a ton, but that's pretty awesome. Number of homes, just hours of offset for homes, the CO2 offset, 6,792 hours. And then your coal offset from this one individual system, 2,726 pounds of CO -- of coal. So, that is, that's really awesome to just see and be able to quantify. And again, this is one of the systems. The middle school system is a lot larger, so you're going to see larger numbers there.
This is only three months old?
Yeah, not even, really about two and a half. Yep. And these are, you know, November, October, November, lower solar radiation months. So, when we hit, you know, March, April, May, June, you're going to see really peak production there. Solar performs better in the cold. So, as temperature drops, as temperature drops, voltage increases. There's an inverse relationship there. So, really, March and April, you guys are going to see really high production just because of the way temperature is affecting electricity. And that's another cool thing to talk about within the classroom that, which Lee would love to touch base on. So, that's cool to monitor, especially in the spring. It's going to be very high. Yeah. And this is something, Mike, that will give you access to and, you know, you guys can share with the teachers and whatnot. So, yeah, I mean, that's really it as far as the monitoring goes. Do you guys have any questions for me on the installation?
Looks awesome.
Great, yeah.
It's, I mean, I've seen some of the arc. I know it started, as you've said, it's been kind of a two-year process at least, right? But it's been great to watch it come into fruition. It's great to look at those numbers. I think it'll be really exciting for our students to get involved in the process and for our teachers to get involved in it. And even beyond that, like for our community to get involved with it and for everyone to really be a part of the process. I think it's fantastic.
Right. Thank you.
How can we find, how can we gain access to the website that shows how much electricity has been produced?
Yeah, I can send you guys, I mean, if you guys are open to having just a generic login and password, and that's not going to cause any harm, it's just, you can't really interact with it. You just see it. I can send that out to you. Yeah, yeah.
I would actually, I would really like it.
But it should be on our, I feel like it should be like live on our website.
Right.
You could just click on it anytime.
You could do that. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Dr. Bowers, should I send you the link to that?
That would be great, thank you.
Great, yeah. And then you can set up the login.
Good.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
So, we may have some, an audience member that may have a few questions.
So, Peter Henderson, I know to say former board member, hurts my heart, Peter, was really instrumental in the whole solar project. I mean, it was kind of his baby and he went through it, you know, hand-held and got his hands dirty in the process. And so, a large part of this all coming to fruition was from Peter's work and passion for the project, as well as Mike Twardy, our facilities manager, who also, I mean, this is his baby too. So, between these two guys, I feel like you made it, you made it happen in a lot of ways. So, I don't know if either of you have anything you'd like to say or questions you'd like to ask or accolades you'd like to accept.
Thanks very much. I'll just say, a lot of people have worked way harder than me to make this happen, but I'm one of the few people that's actually been involved from start to finish. It's actually three years from start to finish. But it's really great that we've arrived at this point. And I think we're now, or the expectation is that the school will be generating about 60% of its total electricity usage from the panel, panels. So, that's, that's pretty amazing. And I see more and more homes around the village and around the town getting solar panels installed on the roof. I did my own house three years ago, in fact, and I'm producing 100% of my annual electricity. And it's just, it's just, you never give it a moment's thought. The panels are just up there. They're just doing their job. There's nothing to do except enjoy seeing a zero electricity bill every, every month. So, anyway, it's very exciting. Thanks a lot for coming down to be with us. And I think the educational opportunities that you talked about are going to be really great once we get that going. Thanks.
Thanks, Pierre.
And thank you, Peter. And thank you, Michael.
Along those lines, I also remember sitting, I remember it was Dr. Valenti really brought this to the board. And so, kudos to him because I remember thinking to myself, that was in the middle of massive budget cuts, Common Core, APPR, and I remember thinking to myself, is this really something we want to deal with now? You know, bring on another major thing? So, but he had the foresight to really see through that. So, kudos to Dr. Valenti, wherever he is.
Great, okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here and we're excited for what comes next.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, great presentation.
Have a safe trip back.
Yes, thank you.
It did, yeah. All right, Peter, if you want to sneak away, we won't take it personally.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, so we're moving forward into the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have a number of things I'd like to share with you or just kind of introduce. And I did, over the last couple of weeks, share an idea with the board about the potential of next school year, trading off the superintendent's conference day to have the equivalent of that put into the calendar for two-hour delays. And one of the things that we're finding with some of the new work that we're doing is that it's difficult to find big chunks of time for our teachers to be able to plan together. And so, we are, we were trying to kind of think out of the box and think of ways that we could provide planning time at reasonable intervals so our teachers would have time to do the planning. Having seen this being done in other districts, the two-hour delays would be in the calendar. We would have some type of support here for the parents that needed to drop their children off and get to work. So, if they chose to, they could drive their students to school and we would have a program here. We're talking a little bit about what type of program we would have. I think there's an interest in having a real educational piece to the program that we've created. And so, as we begin the process, which is already in existence right now, it's happening, to schedule for next year and to create the calendar for next year, we thought this is the right time to propose it and to discuss it. And this may be the first of some other interesting ideas. We're trying to figure out how to allow for the planning and the refinement process that happens with our kind of deeper learning, authentic learning experiences. But that's one of the things that we hear repeated often, that it's very difficult to find time, especially when you're using and when you have interdisciplinary types of projects. You need to have that opportunity to talk. And we're looking at other things that we can do through the day as well without impacting instruction. So, I wanted to introduce it to you. I know that we've, I put it in writing, but I thought if you had a questions about it or if you'd like to have a conversation about it and give me either a yay or a nay in putting this into the calendar for next year.
Well, you know, we talked about this a little bit at our agenda meeting this past week and something that came up for us was exactly what Diana's saying, that this taking time away from the students could be an opportunity, if used properly, to provide an educational opportunity for the students in a way that they don't normally get. So, something that Evan threw out was like a field day, like a two-hour, if it's a two-hour delay, can we, for the elementary school, can we provide like a two hours of physical education? You know, games and competitions and fun stuff. Or could it be, could there be an arts component, like the arts, you know, fifth grade Arts Alive day? Could there be an opportunity to bring a speaker in for the high school students? Like what can we do in those two hours that the students and the parents don't feel like, oh, now I'm just going to have to hire a babysitter for two hours or my kid just sits around for two hours or whatever? But how can it be beneficial to the kids in an interesting way, as well as beneficial to the teachers in an interesting way? So, that's just something that we were kind of talking about as, I think we're all for it. I'll say, I'm all for it, giving the teachers more time to plan as long as the students feel like they're getting something interesting too.
But I just want to clarify one piece. It's not really changing the number, like it's taking a superintendent's day, so a day when there normally would not be instruction and dividing it over four days. And so, really, I mean, it's interesting. So, I mean, it's sort of an, it's a, an equal switch. And, you know, ordinarily, parents would have to provide some kind of whatever we do when we work and, you know, we have a superintendent's day. But I do see the issue of it being four different days. It does--
Or maybe five.
Or maybe five. But, you know, it does, it does, it does impose a different kind of burden. So, the idea of recognizing that and, I mean, it ends up being like, you know, and then providing us an opportunity to do something special, educational, fun with the kids. I really, I really like, I like that. So, in terms of like the logistics of it, that makes sense to me. The piece about providing teachers with time to plan, you know, big chunks of time. I mean, there's just all the evidence in the world that that's really what they need. I mean, that's what every professional needs periodically is, you know, especially if you're talking about collaborative work, is you need time to plan that collaboration. So, you know, it seems to me like there's really thought going in about the potential impact on families. We're not taking away instructional time, even if we didn't offer those activities, but I'd like the idea of offering them and--
But it's like if you, you think about somebody going into the city to go to work those five days, that's almost five days that they can't go into work, that they have to be home and deal with their kids instead of just one day.
Right.
So, it is a different, exactly what you're saying. It's not an equal ask for families. It's kind of a, it's--
But acknowledging--
But there would be options, though.
But I have, yeah, that's the important part.
That's the important part.
I don't know. I think, you know, it's hard to know what the general response, you know, will be. I mean, I saw, yeah, I think, I don't know. I think it's, I think it's a great idea and I think it is really important for our teachers, you know, I do.
And I also should mention that during the winter months, we won't be doing that because we don't want to add insult to injury if there, there are two-hour delays because of weather. So, we'd probably be looking at September, October, November, April and May and have, even though it can't be divided out evenly throughout the year, there's a reason for that. But it would still allow, especially when you first come into the year, you could have three opportunities to really get everything planned and move ahead.
Right, right, right.
So, yeah, I think it's a great idea as long as there's something provided for the students.
Yep, okay, good. Okay, thank you. So, number two, Building and Grounds Committee. We have our first Building and Grounds Committee meeting on December 7th. And one of the things that we're going to be discussing, and you should have received a copy of this. It's also on Board Docs. This is our very small building condition survey. Yes, it is. And so, we've asked for it to be blown up or to be put in a different way, but it's problematic because it needs to stretch across the paper. So, anyway, these are the suggested areas within the district that the building, that the building committee should be looking at as far as repairs or renovations or even, and I hate to say it, a building, some type of building project in the near future. And there are some, right now, we have an older building, which is the largest building on the campus that has need for some renovation and some sprucing up. And so, there are many pages, I think there's four or five pages of this small print that really talks about specific areas through the district that need our consideration. So, this building condition survey will be the main topic of discussion and it's something that we're going to start talking more about once we get it through the Building and Grounds Committee.
And a lot of this is, I mean, I could barely read any of it, but the last number, the 555, 565, whatever that says, that's the total amount that, I mean, it's all an estimate, but an estimate of what all of the recommendations are. Is that correct?
Well, that's, I, my understanding, yes, is that it's, well, for per page, there's different amounts.
Oh, I thought that was the amount for the complete total.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, yes, it goes across.
I see. Okay, so it's not, there's not one grand total.
Right. And so, but I also have to say that I think that they, the values are on the upper end as far as the lower end. They probably overestimate then underestimate for the reasons, obvious reasons. It could be done over a five-year period and we'd be prioritizing. But we will have to start taking a look at some of these areas.
And then is the plan to take that report as well as look at our strategic plan?
Yep.
As well as, or use those two things to then create our five-year facilities plan?
Yeah, our vision.
Our vision for the next five years.
Right.
And so, we're taking that information and the strategic plan and kind of meshing them together and figuring out what's the priority list and how do we get there? And then, of course, how do we pay for it?
So, if you have any questions prior to the 7th, I'm sure Mike Twardy could take a look and get you any information that you would like. But at this point, we also have binders that are the, the large scale of all the things that are in here that you may want to take a look at when, when time allows. And we can make copies of the binders if you'd all like one. But this is, I asked for kind of the thumbnail sketch and this is it. And then we have binders with all the other information available.
And something we, I'm sorry.
So, if we wanted to look at that, we could just stop by the district office, let Linda know in advance or let Mike know in advance and just, and just look through it. I mean, because it's, the fact that it goes out so long, I mean, I thought it was really interesting to look through and it's really detailed, even on these pages. I really, like, I also had some trouble reading it, but you could, you could tell that it was really very thoughtful and like this has to probably happen within five years and this every couple of years and it's-- And it's really great.
That's provided by the state.
Well, this, we actually hired a company and Ann did a great job. You want to tell them what you did?
We negotiated. We negotiated.
To get the price down.
Substantially lower, so it was maybe a 15th, a 10th or 15th of what we would have paid?
We thought it was going to be $35,000 and it was $6,000. We're good negotiating team.
She did a great job.
Yep. And so I think this is on the agenda later, but Peter Henderson was our Buildings and Grounds BOE liaison. So we'll need to figure out what we want to do about that as a group because it does seem like it's an important, there's important stuff going on. So we can discuss that later on down the, down the agenda, putting that out there.
Okay, the next is that there will be parent meetings that are offered to our community or any community member that would have an interest in our work with the project-based learning and the training we've been doing over the last couple of years. And we know that there's some mystery around the way things are being introduced and taught in our authentic learning kind of type of environment. And so we're going to be offering both an evening coffee and a morning coffee on December the 15th, 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. If anybody would like to come in. And I will be working with a number of the teachers to kind of share the information that we have experienced over the last year and a half, talk about our work with the New Tech Network, the work that Simon Duder and Leah Horn are doing with our faculty and our students and kind of give an overall understanding of, of the direction of the district. So if you have an interest in joining us, please join us for one or both if you'd like. We also have a meeting on February the 9th. The Garrison Board of Education has asked for this year to have the meeting where we present the opportunity for Garrison students to attend Haldane High School. They would like it to be here and they would like to invite our board to be present at the same time. So we're looking at February 9th, Tuesday, February 9th, for an evening presentation. And everybody's invited and our community as well is invited. And there'll be information about the high school and the offerings. And we would like anybody who has an interest to come. And then the last thing on my superintendent's report, and we did talk a little bit about this, the board and we read together a book every year. And we originally were talking about reading one type of, or one book. And then through conversations, we thought about possibly changing the title. And in that, we were also discussing, would it be something that we would like to open up to the community and have a community read, one, one community, one, one read type of format? We talked about the book mindset. And it's something that we're starting to hear a lot about in our classes. And I actually was walking down the hall and two, and there were four fourth grade students out in the hallway today and they were taping it on the iPad. And when I walked by, I had to stop because one of the young ladies said, "We've been asked to explain to you the difference between a growth mindset" and a fixed mindset. And then she went on to describe the, what a growth mindset is and how we're trying to create growth mindsets at Haldane and what a fixed mindset is and how you go from a fixed to a growth mindset. So I wish I had camera to, to tape them. But it's something that we're hearing a lot about in our classrooms. And many of our teachers that are doing the authentic learning experiences are talking to kids about the characteristics of a fixed and a growth mindset. When I had my last coffee, this was a topic of conversation with the parents. And I actually had a number of parents come up the hill and I gave them all my copies of mindset. So they were going to go home and read it. And it's something that I think the district as a whole has a real interest in. And so it would be a discussion and we would have to talk about, like, if we did a full community invitation, what you'd like it to look like? Is this something you'd like to do? How would we invite them in? We would certainly, you know, if anybody RSVP'd to us, we would provide a book for them. I would imagine, I'm thinking I'm going to give Jillian a call and possibly do something with the library. So I just wanted to throw it out and see if you, what kind of interest you would have in that.
I think it sounds great. I know that, you know, Brent Harrington led the Community Read, which was-
The middle school.
The middle school Community Read. And it was kind of a similar process. And they did it, I don't know if this is what you're thinking of, but they came together one night.
Right.
It wasn't like how we were doing it last time where we kind of every chapter by chapter. It was like everybody reads it and then they come together one night and have like small groups and somebody facilitates a thing and it becomes like an evening event. And I think Jillian at the, at the library, they had copies of the book and there was also copies here.
And that's still going to happen, the middle schools still have their read?
Right. But I'm wondering if that's like, are you thinking of it as that, in that format? Like a one-night thing where we invite everybody? Are you thinking of it as like what we did last time, like a ongoing?
Well, I think if we're going to include the community, they would probably prefer it just being a one-night event. But-
Because we, because before we talked about bringing in the community, we had also talked about this being-
For the board.
Our, so- Yeah, with the administrators. So I'm wondering, so one thing that, because I would still like the, the opportunity, I don't know if it needs to be every month, but I think I would like the opportunity as a group to do that and with the administrators. And so maybe there's a way in which we could go through the book. I don't know how, I don't want to burden people, but we could, with the administrators, we could read maybe a quarter, a quarter, you know, but then come together with the community at the, at the end. But I, again, that's just one thought. Like, I didn't necessarily want to give up sort of the opportunity for us to have that shared.
A personal intimate discussion about stuff.
But even those have to be, are those open meetings? There's still open meetings. I mean, they're, they're here. But I, I do like that. But again, I'm, I also understand that people have lots and lots to do and it would be one way to do both.
That's interesting.
So what if we did it and then when we had the community night, we, us and the administrators, we're the facilitators of the different groups?
That would be cool.
Yeah.
That would be great.
I like that.
Right, so we started us and we set it up and then the community night comes one night, but that includes both parts.
I like it.
And I also have to say, I think that there's room for the kids to be involved in this because they are very much, they're very focused on it at, in the, especially the elementary and the middle school. And it's giving them an opportunity to, to understand that the concept of making mistakes is all part of the learning process. And if you, you're starting to see, I was in Simon Duder's class and there was something on the wall, and I think it was from Benjamin Franklin, that was saying that he knows 10,000 ways how not to do something and one way to do something. And so it was just by trial and error and all the other things that he, he did in order to be the genius he was. And so, but the trial and error and the other parts of learning and make, and failing and then using that to learn better is becoming a regular discussion for our kids. And it really should be because there are too many students that are afraid to make a mistake. And making a mistake is all part of the learning process, so. Okay, so then we'll talk about, we'll have, we'll come up with our schedule for the board. And then in the spring, a Community Read, we'll also offer it to the community. And then you can be the, whatever group you, you choose to be, whatever we decide to do.
Yeah, I like that, that sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Is there any communication from the public? Okay, moving into consent agenda minutes, may I have a motion, please?
Motion?
A second.
Are there any discussion? We are, the minutes in the Board of Education meeting held on November 17th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second, sorry.
And for discussion, Ann, did you have a couple of things to share?
I'll just point out that there is no treasurer's report for October, which would usually be at this, at this meeting. There was an issue with getting into finance manager for completing that. That will be, you'll have the October and the November treasurer's reports at the January meeting. And in the same type of issue, there are two central treasurer reports because there was a computer issue last month that, where we could not have the central treasury. So there are two this month, September and October.
Great. And there was a question I had asked, Ann, that maybe you could just answer for the public about the-
Oh, right, sorry.
The bus maintenance.
Yes, the capital fund, there were two payments for vehicles, a maintenance vehicle and one of our buses. We were able to purchase two buses this year. Those vehicle purchases were all the result of the referendum that was passed in May. The vehicles are now all in.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Second?
Great, is there any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to point out that we have, what we're doing is approving our librarian for the district who will be starting, yes, be starting right after we return from the holidays. And so January 4th will be her first day. And she's had a lot of experience, both in public and private libraries, and we're very glad to have her.
Great. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, moving into unfinished business. So we are doing our second reading, potential approval of our amendments to policy 6510. That's the Affordable Care Act. Can I have a motion, please?
Second?
Are there any further questions about the policy? Do you guys feel like you're ready to approve it? Yes. Okay, so Julia, would you like to read it?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the amendments as a result of the Affordable Care Act to policy 6510, health insurance.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, school board candidate. So we are very happy to announce to the public, we have candidates. And we have great candidates and we have four candidates that are all fantastic. So thank you to those of you who are our candidates. Thank to you, to anyone who wrangled any of these people to become our candidates. Thank you to anybody who considered being our candidates. We are very happy to have candidates. So yesterday was the deadline, so we have our four people. And we'll be doing our interviews next week, Tuesday, December 8th, at 6:30 in the library, the middle school, high school library. Those interviews are public, so if anybody wants to come, please do. We'll be interviewing all four candidates. And then, you know, we need to decide as a group, just to kind of, just talk that through about how we want to go through that interview process. So we've created a set of questions. Those questions have been already given to the candidates as of this evening. Thank you, Julia. So they have the, the questions. There are kind of two ways we can do the interviews. And Evan and I were chatting about it. There's, we could have each person kind of have an interview time slot where we ask this one person all of their, the questions and just focus on that one person. They're done, we move to the next person. Or we could do it where they each get asked question one, A, B, C. You know, each person gets asked that question, then we move into question two. Each person gets asked that question. And we could rotate, like who gets asked the question first. So those are kind of our, our two possibilities that I see, unless you guys see another one. And we just need to decide what works best. I personally was, was originally thinking about time slots. Like, okay, you're going to be at 6:30, you're going to be at 7:00 and do it that way. But then, when I was thinking about the public nature of it, it seemed a little unfair. Because it's a public meeting, they would get to listen. You know, the person who goes last gets to listen to all the other person's comments. So I don't know, I thought that was a little bit unfair. So it might be more fair to kind of divvied up a little bit. What do you guys think?
Well, I thought, I thought that was the better way to go, like time slots. And I thought maybe we could do like what we do with the ballot selection, to be fair. Like, we have a lottery, you know, that, to pick who goes first, second, third, fourth. So this way, that, that's a random thing. And, you know, and, and just go from there. But as opposed to having them all four sit like a panel and, you know, like, like they're competing against each other. Like, I mean, technically, I guess they are, but, and I don't, that, that was my thought.
Well, and that's how it was set up when we actually ran.
Well, that was not a, but that was, that wasn't an interview. That was just more of a, an open forum, what do they call those things? But that was my, and so that's my, but, you know, it's definitely not a deal breaker. Yeah.
That's your preference. Do you guys have a preference either way?
Well, I definitely, I mean, it's interesting because, right, so it's not, I see Evan's point that we don't want them to feel like they're competing against each other. And yet, at the same time, we will consider- Well, we will consider their response, I mean, they really are all great candidates. And so we really will use, I think, I mean, it's a little bit different because I think we'll probably use a combination of what we know about their experience and their responses to, you know, to make our selection. So anyway, to get to the point, I do think, because in a sense, we are going to be comparing them to each other, it is fair for them to alternate, for them to answer the questions as a group, one question at a time, but then alternate who, who starts just because it doesn't, it doesn't seem to provide anyone with any overall advantage. Yeah.
That's my inclination too, but I'm flexible.
Okay, so it sounds like we have three leaning towards one direction. All of us can see both, the benefits of both. I have a feeling the candidates would feel more comfortable in a panel-like discussion than being completely interviewed in front of each other.
Yeah, and I guess I should have made it clear, I actually lean pretty strongly towards that option.
Okay.
You think, I mean, my thinking is, my thought process is, like, what would I prefer?
As a candidate.
And, and, and I think I would rather just be there by myself, answering the questions, talking to, to the board.
But you know what, you know, think about how we operate as a board. It's not how we operate.
No, I know.
It really is kind of like, you each get to kind of say something about one topic and then we move on to another topic. So maybe it is kind of representative of how we even operate as a board, that that's how we interview them.
If, if they were private interviews?
Yeah, very different.
They're not completely different. But since they have to be public.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, good. So that's how we'll, we'll go through the process with the interviews. And then the other thing to talk about is that we have to deliberate about the, and make a decision about the candidates in public. So my suggestion is that we end on Tuesday without deliberating. Like, we, we just let it be, we get to sit with it, we all get to kind of ruminate on it. And then we come back the following week.
During our workshop.
During our next workshop meeting for discussion about it and decision. Are you guys comfortable with that? I feel like going into discussion right then and there seems a little, I don't know.
And then the appointment would take place.
Would, would you?
Well, we'd make the decision, well, hopefully, we have consensus. We come to a decision on Tuesday, the 15th. And then we inform the person and then they can get sworn in anytime before their next business meeting, but they would start at our next business meeting.
What would you think about doing the discussion at 6:30? Kind of like- Kind of like, the kind of like what we did tonight, like, in, like, so it's not as, I don't know, just, I mean, it's open to the public, whoever wants to come, but not necessarily.
Filmed?
Filmed and also in front of, like, the entire,
Audience.
You know, audience. I mean, it's open to the public. Well, the workshop meetings usually, the workshop meetings usually are, are more intended and,
The administrators are here.
The administrators are there. So, you know, this way, because the administrators won't have an option, if we start at 7:00, they have to sit there. But, you know, the administrators might feel like, you know what, listen, it's, you know, we don't need to be there for that, so we're not forcing them to be there. So, um, I don't know. It's just, it is an awkward thing, it's open to the public. So it's, it's way, if we do it in, it's in public, it's in another place, so someone's really going to have to make the effort to say, I want to be there specifically to hear that conversation.
I think that might be a good compromise.
I do.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah. I, I, I do really like that idea. And I think, I think, yes, it is absolutely an open meeting and anybody who wants to be part of that conversation can definitely show up, but it does not need to be part of the public meeting where the administrators are here and waiting and it's,
Yeah.
End of a long day. And I think it's, 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 it is a somewhat separate, it is quite separate from what a workshop meeting is typically like. I think that's an excellent suggestion.
All right.
I like it.
Six to seven?
Six or seven? Six?
Six to seven.
Six to seven.
Six o'clock.
In Health and Careers. Okay.
And then we hopefully will have consensus. We will announce our selection and then we'll inform the candidate.
Oh. But will we announce our selection before we inform the candidate then? Or do you think the candidates will all be at the workshop meeting?
I think they might be, they, they can all know, I think, our schedule. And they can be here if they want to be, waiting with bated breath, or they can wait for the phone call at 8:30. I think that's up to them.
But it will be announced to the public before they're notified?
Yes.
We can call them before.
We could call them.
In between, we have, we'll adjourn to, to re-adjourn here.
I think that would be,
Yeah. We'll call them.
It would feel better.
Okay. All right. Anything else that we haven't addressed about the interviewing selection process? Julia, is there anything from your end that I'm forgetting?
Uh, no.
We're good? Does it feel good?
I guess I, just the one thing, maybe, I don't know if this would have been said in the letter, but I do sort of want to say publicly that, you know, that the group collectively worked on the questions and, you know, we really thought about, you know, what, the kinds of information that we thought would help us make what I think might be a difficult decision. So, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Thought went into it, you know.
Agreed.
Together, collectively.
Play practice.
I was a little concerned.
Should I ask all the questions? Should we rotate who asks questions?
We could rotate, we can each have a question.
Each have one that we need? Yeah.
And Jen can have two, because there's five questions.
Okay. There can be follow-up and the, the candidates have no, have been told that, that it's not just like a monologue, like, you ask the question and they monologue about it, like, they're going to give their answer, but any of us are welcome to ask follow-up questions, ask something specifically about their resume and how it might relate to that question or something, like, there can be some flexibility in it. So feel free, you know, we're going to be prepared, interviewees or interviewers, you know, look at their resumes and, you know, be prepared to ask them anything that you want to.
I think, do we want to think about, I don't want it to be like super rigid, like a time limit, but like, five people, four people, five questions? Like, do the math. You get to an hour really fast.
Right.
And I just don't know, I just don't know.
I don't think any of the questions lend themselves to being that long-winded.
I guess you're right.
I could be wrong.
All right.
But I think, I think we can use some judgment.
Okay.
To step in. Maybe, maybe I, I will reserve that and I'll, I'll be the step iner.
Reserve the right to, to, to move on to the next question.
Step in when necessary.
Reserve the right.
I'll reserve that right. All right, well, I think we're good. Go again? Okay. Moving into the discussion, nomination of the Vice President of the Board of Education. So we are in need of a Vice President because Peter Henderson served that role. I would like to, I don't know if we have any further discussion about it, but we did discuss it briefly and Evan mentioned that he was interested in the responsibility. And, um, you know, I think that, that's great. And I really appreciate that you're willing to step up and, and take that on, that responsibility and that you are such a great, you're a great choice for that leadership role because of your experience here. You are definitely our, our legacy leader. So I'm really thankful that you're willing to do that. Yeah, well, I think I have to make a motion. So I'm going to make a motion to, Julia, you tell me if I'm doing this wrong, but I'd like to make a motion to nominate Evan Schwartz for Vice President.
Second.
Is there any further discussion about that?
If Jen's happy, I'm happy. No, because I think it's, no, no, I do. And I don't mean that in a, I mean that in a couple of different ways.
I just want to write that down. I think that's fantastic.
For this, for this particular, well, no, no, really. No, um, no, because I think, so the little bit that I know about being on the board and just sort of, i- is that being president is an incredibly demanding job. And that my perception of your relationship with Peter was that you really needed somebody who could, who, who could meet those, you know, who could meet those demands, you know, like the demands of, of, of being that, you know, partner in, you know, addressing some of the issues. And, and I do mean that. I mean, and if it, if it's something that works for you, it definitely works for me, yeah. And I think, but also I think to know that, that, you know, I think we've demonstrated so far, like, we are all committed to helping in ways that we can. And if you need, like, if something happens and you need something else, like, that, you know, you can call on the rest of us. I hope that's, I hope that's really clear, yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel that way. I feel like sometimes different cultures of boards are different, where it's president and vice president are like this and the rest are kind of to the side. And I think that partly our board with the introduction of this, like, rotating agenda meeting stuff, you know, I feel like we are trying to create a culture where that's not the case necessarily, where the president and the vice president aren't the only ones in the know, that it's really more of a, a group effort. And I think that Dr. Bowers has led that effort as well. So I think that, um, I think that it's not just about the president and the vice president, I think it's about all of us and I think that's great. So, um, all those in favor of Evan Schwartz becoming our next Vice President?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So, um, we have to change the tape maybe while Julia prepares to read the oath of office. And we're back. So Evan is signing his life away as Vice President.
Okay. So I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Howdene Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Great. Okay, any communication from the public?
Can I communicate as a public member in this place?
No. You can communicate as a board member.
I'll communicate as a board member then. But I'm taking this opportunity and I should have thought to mention this to you before.
Yeah.
But I just want to say, I, the senior class had a fundraiser the Friday before Thanksgiving where parents of first through fifth graders could drop off their kid to be babysat. And then several parents were, were, were here to help. And, um, along with Julia Sniffin and Joe Verdodamo. And I have to say, it made me so happy to be on the Board of Education that night. Really, like, more than, sorry, you guys, more than anything else that has happened, it made me realize how important this role is, but how important this school is. I mean, it was mostly, I mean, the kids were gorgeous, you know, I mean, it was just great. The seniors, like, to watch Christian Bach and David Rotundo literally, literally just manage this big group of third, fourth and fifth graders, pretty much single-handedly, you know. I mean, I was there, you know. Was just, it was great. It was really great. And Julia and Joe were fabulous, just fabulous. And so it was just one of those moments, you know, where I was just like, this is, this is great, you know, this is great. So I just, I did want to say that, you know.
Right on.
And it gave a lot of mom and dad's time to do little outing shopping.
I think parents did appreciate it. I think it went well. There was, it was a big take and, and the, and the senior class made a lot of money. Not like ridiculous amounts of money, but yeah. It was nice.
It's all being part of the community.
It was great.
Okay, we're going to move into new business. So the Board of Education agenda meeting, so this is just to share that Diana, Evan and I had our first education meeting, Board of Education agenda meeting via Google Hangout last week. So we each were on our own computers in the luxuries of our own homes. I think Evan was in PJs, I'm just going to say it. No, you weren't, I was kidding. It was a night. It was like eight o'clock at night and we're, you know, just, and my tech support husband is trying to get us all connected. But it was great. And it was technology at its best and we were all three in different places and Diana was even in the woods at her home and we could have our agenda meetings. So it wasn't ideal, I mean, it's certainly better to be in person, it's for sure, but it was, um, it was good.
I mean, for the most part, I mean, there's really nothing that we could, we even, we discovered that how we can even share documents, we can be looking at the documents on the same screen, so it really was, and I just want to thank, you know, Dr. Bowers and, and Jen, because it's, without that, I don't think I could have, I could do this, you know, VP thing, um, you know, under the old system of, you know, the, the president and the vice president meeting with the superintendent, you know, during the day, because it just wouldn't be possible. So, you know, just want to thank them for the flexibility, because this is really the only way it's possible. And, and it does, I mean, it pretty much,
Opens things up.
It opened things up, so it's, it was, it was great.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, um, we can keep that in our, our possibilities bag. So as, you know, we set the next, um, agenda meeting, if it doesn't work for, you know, whoever's next in rotation who wants to go, they want to go, they're available, but they can't get to the school on time, you know, maybe we can find out a different way to do it.
I, I use Google Hangout all the time to collaborate with, with colleagues and I do think it's, it's much better than the phone, not as good as in person, but, but much better than, much better than the phone. It is, and it's, it is really, you can do a lot that way.
Yeah, so it was good stuff. Okay, so, um, moving to the CSE, CPSE recommendations. May I have a motion please?
Make a motion?
Second?
Any questions or discussions? Are we just ready to have Julia read?
Ready to have Julia.
Okay, I'll read. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So the next thing on our agenda is the approval of the resolution for the sale of the district-owned property on Cedar Street. We, that was what we were in executive session about earlier and we have decided to table that for a moment because we had some questions. The board had some further questions about the contract. So that is being handled by some lawyers and is to be continued. So we are not approving any, any, any things. And then the last thing on our agenda is to discuss the Buildings and Grounds Committee situation. So Peter Henderson was the Buildings and Grounds Committee Liaison, he was the PTA Liaison, and he was the Negotiations Liaison. The negotiations isn't in action yet, but it will be soon, but I'm hoping that we'll have our new board member by then, so we can include that person into this conversation. The PTA Liaison, I think, can be paused as well until our other person is on board. But the Buildings and Grounds thing is a little bit different because they're having their first meeting next week and we should really have a representative there, even if just temporarily, even if it's not the, a long-term assignment. That meeting for me is kind of not possible. So, It's Monday at 3:30. So I guess the question is, are any of us available? If so, we should go. If we're, none of us are available, then I'll just raise my hand and tell them to, you know, inform me and I'll be in touch with Diana about how it went. So I can, I'm happy to take that on if nobody else, if, if we're all in the same boat.
I teach on Monday in the city, I just, there's no way.
Okay, so you're a no.
I,
You're a no.
I can do Monday, December 7th, but I don't think I can take it on permanently.
Okay.
And I would actually, I mean, maybe we want to wait until we have our new member. It's actually, that's a committee I would be willing to, to, to take on. But I can't, I can't do it.
This Monday?
No.
Next Monday.
So where is the meeting?
We'll let you know.
Do they always meet on Mondays?
I, it has been B1, but I'm not sure. And, and this is the first one we've had this year, so it's flexible. I'll let you know if it's not B1.
Okay.
So, great. So Margaret, you're going to step in and then we can, if we want to, once our board member gets appointed, if we, we can kind of reassess if who wants to,
3:30.
Pick it up. Great. All right. Is there any further communication from the public? A very chatty public. Kimberly? Are you sure? Are you sure? Do you want to talk about anything? How are the holidays? No, okay. So, um, anybody else have anything they need to share? May I have a, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.